Four months.
No, I swear I didn't.
Call me in order. United States of America, and the ability for which states, one nation under God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all. Minutes fifty. July ninth, regular meeting of the city council have been distributed as well as special meeting of July twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve.
You want to get as long as you can, you want to keep two.
Okay.
Under general property down from the bottom, we just have a slight cost to burn off, and that would be part of the street.
Well, you know what?
I'm sure.
But he's got it on the tape. So that's why I wrote, I mean, that's what was said, even though. Hospital care, no, we're not making this street because it was facing union. I thought it was.
And then a bunch of things was right in front of you, which is.
There are no other additions, corrections, or alterations to our current motion to have minutes of regular meeting July ninth and a special meeting of August. July twenty-fourth. Second. All vote. City clerk's cash receipt before.
Total cash receipts for the month of July, one hundred seven thousand, three hundred five dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion approved. I'll move. Second. All vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Deputy Pete told me we received quite a sizable check today from income tax of sixteen thousand. Was that for multiple months?
No.
Usually we only get around six or eight thousand, don't we?
No, sometimes we've gotten more than.
We got eleven. We can handle that. It seems as though the state has done a pretty good job the last thirty days anyway. The state has been fulfilling its obligations, and that's one of our biggest fears, of course. Receipts from, reports from city employees. Mike, you want to wait off on that road stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Shane is not here this evening. Barb? Committee chairman. Rob, Dennis.
We have, at the end of July, we did receive thirty, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred more on our gift. So that's got us up a little, as you can see, a little over forty-five thousand. I know we'll have some more coming. That's quite a bit, so far less than we were, than we've been, than we've been planning. But I think that we're still going to see on that. Also, we kind of went by at the start. We do have our, our bills. If you just want to go ahead and I make a motion that we approve the bills for the month.
Have you all reviewed it? Any questions? All vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other committee with a voice? On the subject of the Lincoln Water Bills. The Lincoln Accounts. Any questions on the list as presented?
Getting a little small.
Yes. Motion to approve the shut offs. Can I just say, Rob, all votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's second there?
Actually, it was, gee, it was first. He was the first second.
Okay, I don't know.
Maybe it was the first person. Issue of the first person. Now, the first second.
Okay, got it.
I have to report tonight that I have someone to fill Larry Hollis's position. Connie Jacobson has agreed to accept the position of Alderman from the second ward. So she will be assuming with your consent, the second ward seat, and also the committee assignments that were previously held by Larry Hollis. So I guess at this point, we're going to ask the house for its advice, and if advice is positive, then your consent in seating Connie Jacobson. I have a motion to seek Connie as Alderman in the second ward. Make a motion. Rob and Don, all the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back up to an odd number. City clerk, would you swear?
Aye.
I don't have agenda, I don't.
You can, that's okay, because you're from state.
Connie.
Yeah, yeah, Tammy's coming. The camera, that one, if these guys, it always sees the back of their head.
You're recording it, it's just a picture. Don't be that funny, Connie.
Hi Connie Jacobson. Having been appointed to the office of Alderman War Two in the city of Toulon, in the county of Stark, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Alderman.
Yeah.
That I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Alderman.
Yeah. I was just thinking, I'm finally taking off. Oh boy. No.
Give it a, have a five, five-minute briefing there, Rob. Also, I had to report that our Alderman, first word, Frank Alisea suffered a stroke. He's not too bad, but he's not too good. He's all right, he just can't get out very much. So Frank has submitted his resignation to AID's Honorable City Hall. I believe Barb will get lowerized here today or tomorrow. So that's equally to be filled in the next sixty days. And if anyone is aware of an individual in his first automatic ward that would be an asset to the city council, we'd certainly like to talk to them. This is for you. Jason, how many pixels is that little camera?
About the same as Andy's.
See, I'm going to find out what you got, and that's what I'm going to buy. I figure you get the latest stuff. Most of the stuff I buy is obsolete already. It's incredible. Do we have a treasurer's report, Sydney?
I do have something to say.
Yes.
I spoke with Doug Irwin on the phone regarding the audit for the city, and we, he is finishing up right now an employee benefits audit for another client. He said he would like to have it done this week or next, which means that we are on the list to follow this current audit, which means hopefully it'll start within the next two weeks. So that's good. Even though we haven't moved up too much on their list, we've moved up a little bit, so he promises. So the audit for the city should start shortly.
Good, that'd be very interesting to see what the last fiscal year looks like. Bruce, anything on that?
Yeah, I think what goes on this gambling ordinance, which is the next. There are two different gambling. One is, that happens past three years ago, and it's held up in the courts. That's with constitutionality, effectively was determined to be constitutional. That's video gambling. I think there's been some delay in implementing it, like the gambling board set up a system, which I think is supposed to be implemented this month. Yeah, this, so that is in effect now. The question came up, the city, what's the kind of, the city doing this? The amount of revenue of the city is five percent of the net transactions, as we'd say. So if you take the total amount people play and what they pay out, the city would get five percent of that difference. It's a tax, it's thirty percent, and that's quite a lot to miss out on. Five percent tax on that debt. If there were any other options. Would be, you know, it's administered by the gaming board. The city allows if they still, they go through the licensing procedure through the act.
Gambling board decision, the next item on the agenda. I hope you all had a chance to look at it. Sorry?
I wonder how it's structured. Well, because we said we were going to copy some of that and like stuff, but.
We did get a copy of it, and we're gonna have it soon.
Oh, you haven't seen the ordinance? I was like, I have it with me, but essentially what it says is that video gambling would be prohibited in the city. As a minister who licenses a true estate game.
I think the question before, the confusion was, obviously we don't prohibit gambling now in cases of, of.
Yes, we do. We have an ordinance prohibiting gambling in the city too. Gambling is illegal.
Well, that, maybe so.
Well, that's what we have now. What we have is an ordinance that Bruce has drawn up that says, the following section is added to the city code. It shall read as follows. Any prohibitions provided for any article, chapter, section of the Toulon City Code that may reference or govern gambling or gaming shall not apply to any device for which a license or permit has been issued by the Illinois Gaming Board and pursuant to the Illinois Video Gaming Act, blah, blah, so long as such devices operate in compliance with requirements of said act and all rules, regulations of the Illinois Gaming Board. So what this does is to reset any portion of our ordinance prohibiting gambling to video gambling, machines, whatever they are. I'm not sure exactly the poker machines, but as Bruce says in his ordinance, in his ordinance, that we are allowing, we're making a provision to make that legal.
Well, I would personally make a motion that we do permit it. I think it's a business decision, so those people just give up to decide whether they want it or not in businesses.
We have a motion to accept this ordinance. Yes, go ahead Connie.
Well, we asked Gary, Columbus's Gary Manis, and he'll answer any questions you have because Massey and I, you know, we're not real sure what's going to go on either. We're just new at this, but he does come, so.
We'll do, take, we take Missy's motion to accept this. Rob's motion, and the second. Now, we open this up to discussion. At first, it's the city council members speak initially on this. So Missy, by making the motion, has voted her approval of this. Rob has indicated also he has approval of it. Do we have any people who would like to speak against approval of this ordinance? Okay, do we have anyone who would like to ask questions about this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question about the ordinance? Anybody like to offer anything to further elucidate us about this? Jason?
The Chamber, Toulon Chamber of Commerce was presented this to its members, and we took a vote, and it was unanimous consent for to allow video gambling amongst business members. No day votes.
Thank you.
So is that all the state is allowing video gambling?
By this act. I would assume we have a fairly tight restriction on what it exactly is. Mr. Manis, do you know exactly what the state has delineated as?
I mean, if you have video poker and video real games, just like it's on the boat, there'll be a two-dollar betting limit on each, on each play of the machine, and you can win five hundred maximum. And five percent does come back to your local municipality, like Bruce said, and it's all regulated by the state. They'll have to go through background checks, just like I have. It's a small business, and every little bit helps. I mean, five percent's the community, I don't know what would be in Toulon, or it all depends, you know? I mean, a lot of people don't like to travel, and they like to gamble, so now they have to drive to Peoria or to Blount City, so it's just good to keep the money in their own town.
Completely, I'm not sure yet. Is there a limit on the number of machines that are?
There can be a maximum of five machines at a location, which, right now, there won't be that many in these locations.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call the matter to a vote.
Aye.
Say upstairs. She never. See how easy it is? Next item on the agenda is old settlers. Mr. Musselman, would you like to step to the fore?
Well, I guess. We were not in time for last month's agenda, so we're requesting our annual donation from the city and support old settlers. Hopefully, we'd had a chance to come out and enjoy old settlers. Saturday was dampened by the rain, then by the storms, the lack of power in half of Toulon, but we managed, and I think overall it was a successful weekend, and we appreciate your continued support of our efforts. I will note that we are trying to incorporate some of the Chamber into old settlers via both help and planning, because right now it's basically Connie and myself on old settlers, so it gets tiring, just us two, so we're always looking for volunteers and people to help, and this year we had some great volunteers that stepped up on Sunday and helped us put away stuff, and so we appreciate that, but had kind of pick up after the storm, didn't lose too much stuff. But again, I'm not sure the amount, I can't remember, it was like a thousand and twelve hundred that the city was able to help us with last year, but I would just request the equal amount for my shit.
Barb?
I don't remember. In my head, I was thinking we were between eight hundred and a thousand.
We have a motion on the behalf of the city council to support the old settlers voluntarily. We made a motion for. Second. Missy, second. Any discussion? The audience went to comment. Now, probably the matter to who? Yeah, you can't, because you've got your money.
Aye.
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 As long as you don't personally have any stake in it.
Got it.
So it's just to the same amount as last year?
No, Rob. We got it. The next subject is TIF. I don't know what, how far you want to go with this, this evening. We have some pending requests. We have an approval of a fair sum of money toward the city park for this year and the next two years. I believe that we have a request which would be filed on behalf of the ambulance, what is the precise name?
Stark County Ambulance.
Stark County Ambulance Incorporated.
Incorporated.
I'd like to get that input from Jim this evening on his respective expansion and what he's looking for. I'd like to, if we can, maybe find a way that we can have a general TIF meeting. This is probably September or October, and we could look at all the requests that we have received to date and see what we're going to be able to do with this year's funds. I hope that we will be receiving enough funds from the county by October, we'll know just how much money we're going to spend with. Right now, what we've approved and the requests that we have are exceeded the money that we do have. So obviously, we're going to have to bear this down and decide what best serves the community, what those type of funds. But I would like to hear from Jim this evening, because they are expanding their in operation and in scope, and so he's going to have to do some expansion with his physical presence.
So just, just a background, Stark County Ambulance is a private loan ambulance service. We do receive tax funds under contract through the fire protection districts to provide ambulance service for the communities of Lafayette, Toulon, and Wyoming as far as fire districts. We've recently expanded out to Galva with management services and billing. We are also in the process of acquiring two more agencies for billing and management services. When I say billing and management services, what these agencies need more than day-to-day operations, is when they run across a hurdle, they need someone to call. And previously, these bigger corporations were charging them quite a bit of money, so we're able to get in there and charge them a flat fee per month, and then we're basically at their beck and call to help them with issues with the state, reworking their policies and procedures. In the process, we've hired, since I have acquired the company, two full-time people, above and beyond what we had prior to that. We also expanded our scope of practice to be an advanced-level provider. The catch-22 I'm in is we're trying to figure out where we should expand our service area, and meaning we are in the process of hiring one, if not two, more full-time people, and I'd much rather keep it in Toulon, since this is where I started. We've had offers from Galva to use their building. Obviously, we, we work in Wyoming as well, that's ours as well, and we could use the building over there, so I'd rather expand here. Where it's beneficial is the individuals we're hiring are intermediate in paramedics that are able to bill as well. So it's one of those things where when a call comes in and they're in the middle billing a chart, they're able to put their pen down and walk to an ambulance ten feet away and leave, as opposed to waiting for volunteers sometimes coming from outlying areas. So the expansion we're looking at doing is getting some more office space, as well as, without office space, it's going to be used for sleeping quarters as well, expanding to the front of the building and the back of the building. We're still in the process of getting some numbers together, but I wanted to reach out and see what kind of support we could get on the side of it before I make the determination of which direction to go. Once again, Mike, I've got a feeling, especially for the coverage area that we're doing, I'd rather keep it centrally located here. So that's where I'm at. There's mud, I don't know if that is enough information or not, but that's kind of where we're at with it.
Do you have any idea, Jim, what request might, what area it could be in, dollar amounts?
Not really. What TIF normally cares is, what, fifty percent up to, is that?
We have had some guidelines, which we have established, just as quickly ignored. We've gone a hundred percent, twenty-five percent, and everything in between. So it's really up to the TIF committee, which is basically the city council.
What I can do is by next meeting is I can put a proposal together for you. We do have some funds set aside for this project, so I wouldn't be looking for a hundred percent by any means, or anywhere close to that, and I find also bankrolling part of it, but it's one of those things, a little bit helps. It might be a situation where we're able to, you know, finish the bathroom as opposed to not having it finished right away type of thing, so I can present something to you guys by next meeting for sure.
Council, any feeling how you want to handle the TIF requests that we have in-house to date, assuming that we have another one coming? It seems to me that we could probably wait as late as October, prior to our next council meeting, or prior to the meeting on the same night, have a TIF committee meeting and have a presentation of where we stand with the TIF funds to this point. By then, we should have Jim's application, and that would pretty well cover all the applications and all the things we've done for the year, what we've committed to and what we have available. I think most of you are, you know, like me, I guess, I lose track of it, I have to sit down, and I go this much for them, and then I do the mental math, and I come up with a number. Let's say that going back to city hall and having Theresa dig it all out, make copies of it, then, you know, it's hard to keep on a daily basis.
I have just.
I have just requests here that I got that we've had so far, and just rough in my head would be around twenty-five. You know, and right now, we have more money tied up with Park than we have. I'm not saying that, but you know, right now, we don't have any, at this time, we don't have, we have no available funds. We're going to have to wait and see at least a little bit what we have coming in. We definitely need a meeting, and I would say, but I don't know if September is going to do any good without having, knowing what our money will be yet or not.
I thought October, if we could, I don't know if our October meeting falls, I didn't bring my calendar with me, but if we could have our TIF, TIF meeting prior to, or you know, like at five o'clock, or even a day ahead of our council meeting, or two days ahead in October. But I would like some public influence on this, because it is tax money. It's not pennies from heaven. These are real tax dollars, and how we spend them is of great interest, I would hope, to the community at large.
John, did you say the eight?
That's when the next October meeting will be early in the month.
Is it possible to modify the park plan, maybe delay part of it or something to get some of these other projects started or?
Yes, within the fiscal year, within the year of our TIF, any money that we have to spend, obviously, is open to discussion. As long as we still have control of the dollars, we can do whatever we wish with them. I would like to see us look harder and harder towards grants. If we could somehow tie some of our expenditures to matching grants, and if we can come up with this much money, if we can come up with a grant, I'm hoping we can get some people enthused to sit down and write grants. Now, we all know it's just a kind of a long, slow project, like writing a term paper in high school. You know, I don't know anybody that'd like doing it, but it's something you've got to do, and only if five or ten percent of grants applications are approved. So you have to write a lot of grant applications to get any money. So that means we have to have people with the fortitude and the patience to just keep slogging out these things, and sooner or later, the money's going to come. We'll get some money, but you don't get, if you get the first one, great. But if we can find a way to get some of our community involved, some of the council involved in doing the grunt labor of writing these grants, maybe we can get some kind of dollar grant, three dollar, that is free. TIF is taxed, but grant, yeah, that's kind of like free money. I think I have one floating around here somewhere. It's kind of interesting, it's from a, okay, based on words, and they offer like fifty thousand dollars to small communities. Massive play, play desserts, let's play. This is Kaboom. Kaboom is so. Anybody know what Kaboom is? Anyway, Kaboom, a national partner of Kaboom, Dr. Pepper Snapple, three-year commitment. Whoever owns Kaboom is giving away money. And I guess they give you the money, and then they kind of get a picture taken, and then they use that for national advertising, showing what great folks they are. But these things happen all the time, and kind of told by Rich St. John, who is now with the Stark County Economic Development Partnership, that he can help us find these grants. It would be free to find them, it's just the work involved and actually executing them. But yes, to answer your question, any money that hasn't been submitted is still out there. Anything else on TIF?
Bruce? I mean, if you've committed, you know, you've committed money. If I'm not sure, Brian, you're stealing my respect.
Any resolution that you consider will change.
Well, I, you know, I guess I'm not sure. If you were to grant some of those applications, even though you have the back injury, so that would be a distraction. Well, let's say they've made an application, we've approved them, or let's, I guess you could call it a contract, in a sense. They've relied on it. If you're referring, I guess, this to the park, this, you're talking about internal, that might be different. Anybody else?
Well, I think this is what I meant to imply. If we had given to Jason fifty thousand dollars, but to me, that money is, that money's been committed.
Right.
It's gone. The money is actually out the door at that point.
Right. Once it's been committed, even though it doesn't actually go to the state.
Well, I just, I guess that's all, that's the way to clarify that. Yeah, internally, the money, any internal money, any project that we're doing within the city, that's still the city's money. I'm sorry.
That was another thing I meant there.
Anything else on TIF? Does anyone have a suggestion as how we might handle this TIF meeting? Or if we need one, wait till October, where we know how much we have, or sooner?
Sooner, I don't know, it becomes speculation, because if we don't get the money, we don't have it to put out.
What can we do? It's kind of hard to plan if you don't know how much money you might get. Actually, I think by October, we have a pretty good feel of how much money. Will we get it to the county office?
Get a date and have it by next meeting, so that we can...
We could set it at our September meeting.
Right.
We don't have to do it tonight.
Why? All right. I don't know how everybody else's calendar is and stuff, but...
I guess that's what I'm asking, how you all feel about this. What do you want to do? You know, I really can down the road, but we need to know how much we have. We need to know what's been requested. We need to know how we're going to slice up the pie.
You won't know that until lockdown, will you?
The way it's been coming from the courthouse, used to be Mrs. Richardson would send us a statement in February, and she was within a buck of how much we were supposed to get. We haven't been able to get anything from the county. The money has been coming in in pieces.
It's been a bad, I guess. So you won't know until lockdown, before we stay in finance?
And I don't even know then, or...
Well, that would be the earliest you would know.
Might know. When does the tax folks do it?
So, God, blue. Right, the sixth of September.
I mean, you might know it's September, but... At time for a meeting, I...
I would, yeah, I would, you know, it seems to be, I don't know what the money is, but we have a meeting to the outback, right now, tomorrow.
What do you think, Brad?
Well, I'd like to plan, I'd like to plan on October, but I mean, if everybody wants to get closer to it, so they know their dates.
Well, the other thing is I'd like to be back in full strength when we do this.
Right.
We need to find somebody from the first ward, we've lost Frank. So hopefully, if we've got somebody that's been on board for thirty days, by the time we have that meeting, it takes a little while just to get your feet back. Let's plan on that. If, if, we'll plan on October. At September meeting, we'll put a specific date on, why you want to hold it. So what's we thinking about?
If it's before the eighth, so it's going to be somewhere in the, you know, first till the sixth or seventh, so. We don't want a Sunday meeting.
No, but unless I'm wrong, the TIF committee meeting is, in essence, a special meeting of the city council, isn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, you'd have to give it up.
Yeah, yeah.
It ends up being the same place. The entire council is the TIF committee.
So we call it a TIF committee, the city council TIF committee meeting, and then you could, you have the authority to do anything you want at that meeting.
I would, yeah, I would like, as a public, I'd like to see some, you know, people have some ideas and things I'd love to see here.
I would really like to hear the Chamber of Commerce weigh in on this. Chamber of Commerce, I think, has a very strong vested interest in how we spend our money, and it would be good to hear from them as well. Anything else on TIF? Next issue on the agenda is the Ida Land acquisition. I see Cindy's with us tonight. This is regarding accepting the offer of the land from the state of Illinois. We've been kicking this around now for a month or two. It's my understanding that the state has offered us this land. In the future, if they want it back to put in, over the week interchange, they can get it back. The only cost so is that we cannot sell the land without approval from the state. There's no requirement on the state's part that we do anything with the land. We don't have to mow it or do anything we don't want to do with it. They simply allow us to use it as if it were our own. So it's, it seems to be more of a land lease. We don't pay taxes on it, we have no maintenance requirement for it. They can have it back if they want it, and we can't sell it without asking them. Last year, I had some folks that graciously offered to put in some prairie plants, twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred some prairie plants were put in with the help of high school students. That was done with no hope of ownership, it was just to modify the intersection and enter to the property. The city council hasn't been too involved with it. We have talked about Jim Nolan's plan of making a front door in Toulon, putting up a sign. There's been an offer to pay for a welcome to Toulon sign out there, and that's kind of where it's at. The city council really has the next step in the matter. Can we accept the land? Does the city council have any feeling as to how they want to handle it, manage it? Have a citizen committee to watch over it? It's pretty much up to the council at this point.
My concern, I guess my one concern with it is if, you know, if our prairie plants take over, and I don't know, it's been a terrible year for that, I guess, that they were put in. But if we are going to have a sign out, if they don't take over, we can't have it looking like a bug sack. So that's going to incur expense. It's going to incur some expense to do some maintenance out there unless we can work something out. And that's my concern right now, is to take on another expense, even hundreds, only hundreds of dollars a year. Is that worth, you know, we've talked, and you've talked yourself, how tight we are, and we have to be diligent on our money, and that's my concern with that out there, is if we end up getting into much of expense. If we do mow some, we're going to have to get the mower out there, and so that's my concern. It's not a concern, but I do give it, Darren, whoever went, you know, whoever did some work on this, though I don't want to step on, when they tried to help us, I don't want to step on a lot of toes. I think last month was the first time we really, you know, we talked, but that we really heard that it was offered, so. I'm just, that's my, that's my concern. I guess there's two, the expense, but I don't want to, you know, I don't want to really step on some externals that goes to the back for us, and that also may have to do some good for us on other things.
Yeah, the only one I know that was here last time, was really talked about, was Don. And Don's the only one that's been here longer than me. It came up about Jim Nolan's, I don't remember that, discussion, like, when that started. But it was something that Jim Nolan had proposed, and then we had these five folks come up and said, oh, the prairie plants out there, and that took off. And, you know, the ball was rolling with that, but we still didn't own the land, and we had only, we had no right at all to go out there unless we asked permission from the state. And when we went to the state, the state said, well, it's our land, and you can't put up a sign, you really can't do anything unless you ask us first. And then they said, would you like to, then I went to Mr. Mahut, and I said, well, we want to put up a sign, and the state shot us down. And he went to work, and then he got back to us. Some discussion as to how the land and the intersection came to be, and the state offered that parcel to us. Now, knowing it was really unsure whether it's one point four six or four six, the actual acreage, because the map, I'm not good at measuring land that well, unless it's square. We had some discussion about it, and I think it was two years ago, before Rob was on, before Misty was on.
I tend to encourage Rob, that I don't know, do we even have a trailer to take a mower out there? How many hours would half an acre take to mow? State can take it back anytime they want.
I think you have to realize how long it takes to get a prairie going, and you don't mow it because it looks tacky the first year. You have to give it time, and it can take several years for those plants to seed down, and, you know, if this is a bad year, you even consider, because you probably lost a lot of those plants this weather. But, I mean, I think having some prairie out there is an accurate thing, but it's going to take some time. And I think if you get frustrated the first year, you're not going to end up with anything.
Chip? Do you guys want to weigh in on this?
I'm not a resident.
Doesn't matter.
I'll be quoted as to where I work. I'd rather not.
Cindy?
It does look pretty rowdy, which is true, and if you go out and mow, you'd have to be careful, because you're going to mow over the prairie plants, so you would need somebody to be there that knows what they look like, because you're going to mow over them. What you would basically need is something in front and have to go high in front of them so they can be seen, and it would be, have to be kind of a patch mow and high. But it wouldn't have to be done like your yard. It would be very, very, um, not, it would be hardly, no, I mean, it would be maybe here and here. It wouldn't be something that you would mow a lot of, because it doesn't need to be.
Do you know how often the state does mow, has mowed? Seems to me that if they mow once a year, I don't remember any more than that, that they've been out there, like?
Lately, it's once a year. It used to be more. Everybody's cut back a bunch. As far as what it's going to cost to take care of, it's all what it might look like. I mean, I don't know, is the state, is the state still going to mow a part of that out there?
Absolutely, they'll mow it right away, Mike.
That's, that's what I'm wondering. So really, as long as right away it's mowed, you can see, you really don't have to many things to do along.
I'm not opposed to the concept. I think it's a little far outside of Toulon, to do the gateway to Toulon. I consider it full on, they're seeing the signs, by the time they get to Toulon, you're like, what time am I in? Outside of that, I would like to see us get rid of some of the other land that we have that we're doing nothing with. The guys at the Grotton, you know, the dog park.
Stuck.
Why are we stuck with that park?
Well, the deed says...
Well, please, we just sign up anyone listening, and we can just give it back. Why couldn't we give the dog park back?
Well, if you'd like to look at the deed, I can show it to you. But the deed basically says that the city, its heirs, what's the term, whose heirs, the signs, are stuck with this piece of land, basically forever, to be used as its, or civic park. And that was the condition upon which the city council took that piece of land in eighteen, nineteen eighty. And that was the condition upon which the city council took that piece of land in eighteen eighty-eight.
We have the corners around Jefferson and...
Mr. Mayor, doesn't that say if we try to do anything with it, it reverts back to them?
No.
If we break that agreement, it reverts back to them?
You're talking about the Dog Park park. I don't think there's anything in there that says that.
So then they can't stop it from doing something?
Yeah, they're telling one or the other.
Then it reverts back to them.
They have to, one or the other.
They give it to the city on the condition that it's used forever as a civic park.
But what happens if you don't? They respect you.
You break that seal, so then it's your turn.
They could see it, but I could see the deed, but I would assume that that's, you know, you're worried about it, so they could take it back. Or they could enforce a covenant or something, such as the stock.
Or they could say, or they can do whatever.
Or they could say...
We've got like the parks, like next to... Jefferson, Jefferson, and, well, Southwood running around. And those, all like little pieces of the guys running around and mowing, it's not much to do with it. I know that's, it's easy, not like, right, I did something, maybe it's something. A reason it could be so long. But that's where I'm like, why are you not seeing the person with his doors?
My, two questions. If you're going to... I would, um, see on a committee to oversee this out there in that junction. And two, if you approve to keep this parcel of land, then I, my personal suggestion would be that you make some guidelines for this parcel, because once you've got, you here have made a plan for this parcel, and there's prairie plants on it, and they start to grow, and they start doing their thing, then when there's new people in here, someone else can come in ten years and do something completely different. But if you have guidelines, then these guidelines are still going. And this would be very beautiful, because you've got the things to go by. So that's just my suggestion.
I don't think, I don't think you'd have a future council. No, I mean, if the deed of the state would have conditioned, I would be one. I don't think the council would enter an ordinance or resolution stating that that would be useful. You know, it has to be in a certain way, so that a future council can do new ones. So I can change the way we're at this point.
Well, then if they, if you accept to keep this today, and tomorrow, you guys can go pull that out and get the dog park out there, that you're talking about.
I guess it comes down to force, you know, what we wish that somebody had done twenty, fifty, or a hundred years ago to make the town a better place. I guess I wish we could all, without Mr. Nolan's argument, for some ten years ago, read it. It was the same thing that, in a lot of sense, it seemed very clear, what you had in mind then. We do not live on a highly traveled road. We're kind of a backwater area on Route Seventeen. You gotta be looking for Toulon to find it. That could be good, it could be not so good. I guess my point of view is, and I've mentioned this for a number of people, my number one concern is that this town survives, I don't know, fifty years, a hundred years. I'd like to see it be around. Look around. Castleton, Elmira, West Jersey, Ulsiola, Spear, Duncan. Those are the big ones that we remember. There's a whole bunch more that nobody can even find on a map. Snareville, Starr, Straytown. These towns are now, they're party fields today. Now, you say, "Wow, they're little towns." We're living. How are we going to approve this town? And what will people twenty and fifty years ago look back at us and say, "Well, we're glad they did that." Now, maybe it's a good idea, maybe it's not. When Jim came to me with the prairie plant idea, that was a great idea. Prairie plants, zero maintenance. I mean, here you've got something that just comes up as flowers and looks great. There's some prairie plants around the state that look wonderful. They do good things for the environment, and good things for the community, and they don't require any maintenance to speak of.
And some people like plants, and some people like dogs, and people like other things. Everybody has their, their things.
My hope was that it would look nice, and that we could sign up and say, "Toulon, this way, welcome, folks," or whatever. Now, not complicated. It's not a complicated idea, but Rob is right, and Visti is right. We have to look at what our expenses are down the line. We know how much it costs to cut the Bark Park, because we cut the Bark Park, the same as you all cut your front yard. Every four days, and when it rains. That's a lot of gas, and a lot of time. And a little piece of land over here in this well, it's not suitable for a house, it's full of bricks. Not suitable for much of anything. How we ended up with it, I don't know.
But if you drive down by Sprayfield, those road gangs belong to the interstate, they're all prairie.
Yes.
I'm sure you don't know those prairie.
They look great.
But it takes time.
Takes time. But we do have people who are willing to put in the time. And we know that we have people here with us today, in the community, who will do volunteer work on projects like that, because everything that has been done out there to date was volunteered. There wasn't a dime spent. Everything was volunteered, and everything was given. So for the foreseeable future, we have that. It will be five years, eight years down the road. I would agree with you. The prairie plants supposedly would be in charge of the product.
I guess the main thing, though, is if we don't continue to be beautified without us taking it. Of course, we could never put a sign up, so then we're not getting that back.
It's just, it'll look ten years above us today. And people have been out there actually cutting weeds that were hiding prairie plants so we could be seen. Just so that they can get some light, be seen by folks driving by. It's going to take a while. It's not as if we're assuming a piece of property we have to maintain to cities' ordinances, that nothing can be hate-ished at all. And technically, it would be a part of the city of Toulon.
So we would have to follow the ordinance, or we wouldn't?
Would have to, what, now?
Follow the ordinance?
No, because it's not in the city ordinance.
No, it's all in the city, no, it's not in the city.
This would, this would not be the boundary of the city. It would be owed by the city, but it's not within.
Hypothetical, though, if we do it, we have a sign out that, five years, and for some reason, our maintenance, it does become kind of cost prohibitive. Can we give it back? Where's the sign? Would have to come down, I'm sure.
I suppose. We can't have a sign as anything that we don't control, right?
I'm just trying to get all of...
Right?
I mean, in all reality, how much maintenance are you looking at? I, I mean, if you don't mow prairie plants, you don't mow prairie plants. So you're not going to be able to mow. And if you only went out once a year and mowed, like the state does now, what's the difference in what it looks like now?
On what they're saying, I was thinking every, it would have to be every week, and if we were talking three times, even if we're talking three times a year. Now, that expense isn't at all what I thought we...
Right, and that's what I'm thinking. If it's, if we just need to decide how we're going to take care of it, as long, if it's once a year, it's not that easy to do. You know, maybe you don't even have to mow it at all.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't know why you'd have to mow it or anything.
You might find, if we did have to do some stuff, you might find some.
The only thing would be to maintain around the side. Obviously, you'll want the side.
Maybe that would be a nice time, you know, more of a...
But that shouldn't be.
Uh, why, it was a lot of this would...
Global departments wouldn't be happy if they wanted to rub the mowberries in all of our roofs. They would be very unhappy with us, because we do have the county ordinance prohibiting people from having to mow trees on the property.
But if, I mean, even if you go out once a year, you're looking...
That's not exactly an invitation to come to town. That would be the point. Advertise Toulon, so you don't really want to do it. But how, you know, that's not something you do.
Now, I mean, according to what you read, right there, the state's not requiring us to mow or do any maintenance to it?
There are no connoissements to that effect.
So if you don't do anything, you don't have to do anything? So what if you've got the money to mow when you can, and if you don't have the money, you don't mow?
Well, as you said, Mike, it would probably be advisable if nothing were done. If there were no prairie plants, if there were no anything, go out there once a year, just knock it down. Because it could be a fire hazard at some point. You don't want things to get out of hand and out of control.
I mean, supposedly, those prairie plants would take it over, correct?
They should do themselves. There was a sweet clover that was taken over in front of them. So I went out, and there was someone else with me, and we pulled them, so it would be for their chat.
But the theory is, is that should overtake everything that's there, and then it becomes no maintenance?
Right.
But it takes about five years or more of it. But once it's done, it looks pretty nice. It just takes time for that growth to get some, I think, in prairies.
Isn't there a requirement that it gets burned off like every five, three years to get it through?
No, it's spring, in the spring, it usually gets burned off.
But it doesn't have to be every year to burn off?
It's recommended every three to five?
Three to five, yeah. That's what it is. Was it every year that you had to do it? Well, that's kind of it. Now, is there any other input? Does anyone from the community have any input? We have a motion to move this along.
Do we have a time limit? I mean, do we have?
I don't know.
I haven't seen any, the dog fighting. I don't know. I haven't seen what... Do you have what the state's...
You got it, don't you, Rick?
Mark says you have.
It's probably, if that city office doesn't have it.
I mean, I haven't seen, I don't know what the... But I'm, by assumption, as to what's been said, they just beat over the city, then they have conditions. Other than that, because it's... If that's the case... The city would have, but I don't know that they would put anything in there, they would assume they didn't have anything in there regarding maintenance of it at that point.
Rick, was there something on, was there some legal, did we have some legal things on it? Has Bruce?
Well, as Bruce said, you know, when you read it, it just, it's a scripture.
I haven't seen it. So I don't know if there's a letter that goes with it, or if there's anything else that goes with it.
Since it's the title page, because they're handing it over to us on the condition that we cannot sell it, lease it, or rent it without their approval. And that they still, I believe, exercise enough demand, that's not the right job. They can give it back, but you don't do that.
Can we actually get that to review before we make a decision? I mean, I thought we'd leave it down with the...
We'll get a copy of it to each one of you. Table it till next month, Mike, come on. Okay, let's move forward to September. I think you're all aware by now that the power went out during old settlers. I think it was like two o'clock in the afternoon, around six-thirty or so, we ran out of water. Shane was going to be here tonight. He's not, because he told me. He's informed me that we were using approximately 10,000 gallons an hour that day. And at the time that the power went out, we were at the low point of the tower might. Help me along here anytime I pick up my towel.
Sounds pretty close to me.
In the last fifteen years, we've run out of water four times. We have a reservoir of some 50,000 gallons that can be pumped by the fire department, should they need it. Cannot be pumped. They cannot access it.
Well, they can pump it into the truck.
They can pump it in the truck, yeah. It's not going to the fire, but the fire department could pump water to their truck from our reservoir if they need it, correct?
I am not going to answer that, because I don't know.
Really, that's what Shane told me.
With the EPA, I don't know if they'd let you throw a hose down in there to suck it out, or just let you have it.
Fire department doesn't know about it.
Sorry?
We've never practiced or know anything about it, so it's a personal question.
Well, this is the first time for me that we've run out of water. Now, that's, these are the facts. We ran out of water. We have run out of water four times in fifteen years, once every four years on average. This time, we ran out within six-thirty till approximately, what, two hours?
It was about two hours.
Two hours, we were out of water. Now, Jason is a fireman, I don't know any other firemen here, but...
Debbie.
Debbie, in that case, if we have a fire in town, should I assume it would be just like a fire in the country, whereby we'd have to rely on Lefebvre, Wyoming for this amount of water?
It'd be worse than that, because you wouldn't be able to refill here at all. Whereas a fire in the country, with Toulon centrally located, you'd have additional time in refilling in a neighboring community. Not only requesting their help, but also refilling there.
Well, this is true, but I guess if you said the fire was in Elmaro, for example, you're at the same distance as Toulon, as Wyoming, or Lefebvre. So you'd be in the same boat if you had a fire in Elmaro.
You would basically have to find a, like you would a real fire.
Right. Now, not to get into all this stuff, I don't want to beat this to death, but the only solution, or there's two solutions. One is another, more bigger water tower, that's about $300,000. So we could spend 300 or so and get another, more larger water tower. Or two, we could buy a standby generator. We have a proposal from Althorfer for a standby generator for $65,000. It would produce enough energy to power the water plant, everything in the water plant, plus the city clerk's office. Probably be enough water that the power left over, we can run an extension port over to the ambulance company. Now, usually when the power goes off for a long time, it's in the winter with a nice storm. It goes off in the summer for a short time, because, well, whenever Silco gets here. But it depends on how many, if Silco has a major storm...
The longest outage we've ever had has been in the summer.
Has been in the summer. How long has that been?
What was that? A lot of it was, for three days, we were out for like, quarter, like, four hours.
I thought that was a winter storm.
No, that was a straight line windstorm. It was a straight line windstorm.
Straight line windstorm.
And, and we brought in generators, we were actually out longer, but we had a generator brought in, the wire again, we're back up and running.
We have the ability to bring in the generator, and it takes, what, 12 hours to get a generator, right, Mike?
Up to, uh...
Up to 12 hours to bring in a standby generator. So one option is to hope we don't run out of water and have a standby generator brought in. Mike?
Never worked that way. Because by the time you make the decision, call them to get the generator in here. You're going to be out of water by the time you get here.
Well, I guess it's predicated on when you make the decision.
And, and usually you're waiting on Silco, which is, okay, we're going to be out an hour, we're going to be out two. You know a real good feedback on it.
Okay, well, does everybody get the picture? The second solution is to purchase a standby generator. We have a quote, an offer, for $65,000. That only provides the generator. We still have to pour a pad, we have to hook it up, so we have another $5,000 or so, Mike?
I don't know, it'd probably be somewhere in there.
We're looking at roughly $5,000 to actually install this generator. It would cost us approximately $2,500 a year to maintain the generator with a service contract. Generator has a service life of approximately 20 years, 10 to 20 years, depending on how many hours it's running. So it doesn't, it's not rocket science. So it doesn't, it's not rocket science to figure out how much it's gonna cost us per year to have a standby generator. This is absolutely a strategic decision that has to be made by the city council. The third point is, we don't have sixty-five thousand dollars to spend right now. So if we want to have a standby generator, we have to find the money. Two months ago, Shane was in here and told us that he'd like to see the city paid off, the water plant paid off, for the expenses incurred, subdivision down here south of town. So that the water plant could begin building a reserve, cash reserve. We have no cash reserves anywhere in the city at this point. They're all spent. They're all gone. We used to have about three hundred some thousand reserves, but that money's now evaporated. So we have no reserves. Anything bad that happens, right now, we have to shoulder it. The only place we can go for anything is to order our money, which would mean a bomb. So how do you want to pursue? Do you want to talk about this generator, or are you interested in purchasing it? Do we go along as we have for the last hundred, forty years or so?
It seems like there was some early out, I think this issue came up in the grand. And I think for a certain set amounts of cost, that they will guarantee to have the generator here within a certain amount of time, if they're called.
We have a contract with Altar for like that.
Twelve hours, I would say it's a little late.
See, the problem is, Bruce, is, okay, when the power goes out, you're gonna have to start making some decisions. Is it, is it short time? You don't wanna bring a generator down and be back on by the time the generator gets up. So you gotta get a fuel supply, then come back up. So that usually takes Silco, Holland to get out, assess, decide what they're gonna, well, they were telling us Saturday, it's gonna be midnight before power come on, when they come back on. Seven thirty. So you can get a four-hour discrepancy one way or the other.
I understand that.
And then what they have to, with Altar, if my understanding is correct on these, they bring a truck in, puts on the generator, which would haul the generator down to Tula. They would drop the generator off, then we have to hook it up to the building, which is all gonna take, you know, you're looking at, what, an hour from Altar to here? Plus whatever time it takes the electrician or whatever to get here to wire it all in. So I, you know...
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing out an idea, and I'm not sure exactly how that would work, but, you know, that's a lot of money. You know, you're not sure if you're even gonna eat it.
Wyoming's got this.
Wyoming has it.
Yeah, they, they, they...
But they've had it for a long time, and I, you know, it's, I don't know.
A lot of places do have it.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of places do. I'm not, it's just the amount of money. I didn't know if there were other Altar, it's just, it's my idea. Jason?
I will say, just being around town that day, heard a lot of comments, people say, can't believe the city doesn't have a backup generator for the water. So they're obviously not here now, but just heard a lot of people throughout the day, can't believe they don't have one, so.
I, I guess if you wanted to make a case for a backup generator having it happen on Bull Cell or Saturday, it'd probably be the most obvious way to get the point across to people, especially during the worst droughts we've suffered. Water usage is just off the walls, so, yeah, I mean, it was a perfect storm. But, you know, then you have to, I guess, sit down and very coldly and calculatingly, figure out how much is it going to cost us to have a generator for this eventuality, and what are the odds that this will happen? I don't know. I mean, you can buy insurance for a lot of things in life. We agreed about people who insure their ends and people who insure other things, but there is a price tag, I guess, there. Mr. Zerl?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of insurance, probably the insurance for housing in Tula is way higher because of the poor rating for the fire department. It is. It has improved over the years. It used to be worse. But Tula residents pay way more for homeowner insurance than other areas like Epioli.
And that's true.
Now, if you had to back up the generator...
Wouldn't make no difference.
It may make a difference.
No, it would not. It's based on water.
Worth looking into. It would be certainly worth looking into.
Isn't it, Jason? It's based on how you pump by the height.
It's certainly asked.
Well, it's based on the response too. And if you don't have response, because you don't have any water, or it takes half an hour, that's, you know, they use calculations, and they just, they look at all of that.
We've heard a lot of horror stories about these sort of things in the boondocks of Missouri and other places.
And the time is fifteen years since there have been a fire.
All right, well, let's, let's keep this thing on track.
One more comment?
It, it comes down, it's, it's dollars, right? It's basically a decision driven by dollars.
Could you use the generator to do peak shaving, to order your peak shaving, to pay more electricity ads? You wouldn't be able to...
It would not, it would not make sense, because it costs you more to generate that electricity than it would be to use it.
Well, depends whether you have a natural gas or what.
It's, it uses, diesel uses twenty-three gallons an hour.
Have you looked at getting a natural gas as opposed to diesel?
Like three thousand more.
Thirty thousand more than the diesel.
Thousand more. It's quite a bit more, yes. I would favor natural gas, because, again, we're thirty grand. That's hard to swallow. It's, it's just a money decision, and it's like anything else, how do you slice up the pie? You know, where do you wanna spend the money? We have a finite amount of money, it's decreasing. Where do we wanna spend it? I, I don't have the answer. Mike would like to have a generator. I guess I'd like to have, a lot of things you'd like to have, can't we afford it? Is it really, and this is the really hard decision, and we don't want to, to get all emotional, say, oh, what if, what if, what if? It's kinda like when I was flying, and we had a backup generator, what happens when that fails? We got a backup battery, what happens when that fails? Well, then you gotta back up other generators that falls under the fusil, what happens when that fails? Well, then you're really having a bad day. You know, and, and sometimes you're gonna have a really bad day, and you really can't cover the air eventuality. Mike?
I don't care either way, I'll have the generator, I'll be honest with you. I mean, all I can say is, yeah, what we were saying is pretty much, you know, it only goes off so often. When it does go off, from my point of view, it would be nice to have the generator, because you stop there worried, because you're like, now what are we gonna do now? And it...
Yeah.
Usually we've been lucky, and we've always been caught with the power, and just put the tower full. And if it's late at night, guess what?
And we weren't suffering a drought, we weren't having old settlers.
Middle of the day, I don't care what you're doing, you're gonna run out. It's, that's just the way it's gonna be. I mean, you just don't have the passing to hold you through during the water out.
I agree with you. It would be nice, it would be good, but the question to the council, is it prudent?
Is it worth it?
Is it worth it? Is it prudent for, we need an actuary to tell us what the odds are of this happening? And at the same time, having a fire break out. If you, if you probably run this on a computer and say, well, how many major fires have you had in the city of Tula in the last fifty years?
Yeah, but who would wanna bank on that?
Oh, that's...
I wouldn't wanna have it in my house.
See, who would you want, you can't bank on it. If we bank that way, then you don't get out of bed anymore. You would never drive your car. There was things you'd never do. You'd never get on an airplane or a train, because bad things sometimes happen. And you can't protect yourself against everything. And if you use that as an example, then basically we all live in bad itself. How many, but?
But, how many people did we lose? How many times has something like that been said and taken for the money?
Yes.
Then something bad happens, and everybody goes, well, we were penny wise in coffees.
Yes.
We just lost a family, because the fire broke out in the middle of the day. Tower was empty, and we had to go to other towns for a while. How long was that?
Why, we have fire escapes today, that's why we have so many things.
They can't, they can't hook this system up, so that somebody can just pull in there and plug in the generator. They can't have that all set up.
We're set up.
Yeah, it's, it's set up. Well, they don't have, they don't have a plug-in on the outside right now. I mean, we have the breaker physically inside. You could hook some kind of, depending on what the generators, how they, they hook up. You could set some kind of quick connection, I'm sure.
I mean, I think, you know, so that, that's like, well, that's a one-time expense. And then from that point on, they bring up that generator, plug it in, for our logging. I don't, I just...
It's, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money to do that, but it's a lot of money to buy it, and then we do.
And the other thing is...
And then if it breaks down, you've gotta...
The house that burned down would have to be worth more than sixty-five thousand dollars, plus all the maintenance. It gets to be dollars and cents.
Who are you, the values of this house?
It's just a numbers game. It's a numbers game. And that's what the council has to be very careful. We can't insure ourselves and buy ourselves out of every eventuality. For one, I wish they'd invented safety belts in cars ten years before they did. Too bad, you know. You think about the lives that probably been saved with air, but what is the expense versus what is the good that they do? And so, can we measure it? Is it measurable?
No, but that's why the tip money needs to be spent on important things.
I can hear it.
You know, we've spent tip money, you know, for, I think, foolishness.
I can hear it.
And, you know, ambulance, we definitely need, backup system, we better have something ready.
Well, Mrs. Zerl, Mrs. Zerl, I'll tell you, we spent tip for public safety, and I guess a generator is public safety.
Well, it fits everybody. Yeah, that fits everybody, and same way with the ambulance. You better have your ambulance and your fire departments, because if you don't, then we're gonna...
What comes with this?
Also, if you borrow the money and you issue bonds with the low interest rates, probably your cost per year, if you amortize the over twenty years, it's probably going to be about four thousand dollars a year.
To borrow the money?
Yes. That's just a rough number, and maybe less than that.
It might be. I don't know what the current rate is for borrowing money from municipal bonds, like five, eight, something like that.
It's pretty low.
Slowest. We still have bonds that we're paying off on the water tower. I guess some would say, well, let's pay off those bonds before we get some more, for that water tower, the, our open land. Mike?
I guess, without just making a gut reaction. For me, I, my suggestion would be, talk to like, talk to some of these other towns that have those generators. Do they think it was worth the expense, or wasn't, or, you know, get some info from other places, so you know. You know, you don't wanna just go off of, well, I don't think, or I don't know. Ask some people that have them, and then you would know, oh, yeah, it was well worth the expense, or no, it wasn't. Check into, like Bruce was saying, check with Altar, see if you can enter into some agreement, but that's gonna cost you extra money dollars a year to get it down.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. I mean, that's, I'm not necessarily suggesting that this should be done, I'm just saying, it should be looked at, because if this comes up, how often? Four times in fifteen years? How often are you gonna be calling them? So if you call them and it costs five thousand dollars, you're gonna understand out there and run it. Say, well, that's a lot of money for one occasion, but, but also think, well, we don't need it for another three years. And it's like, wow, four thousand dollars a year, well, you just spent twelve thousand.
It does get expensive to direct them.
Right, I mean, I don't know.
Not as expensive as owning it, though.
Right.
If you, once every, I think we've only used it once, if my right collection, or twice, once, once maybe.
You would use more than this year.
What's that like?
You would use more than this year.
That's true of a lot of things.
But, but here's, here's the thing, instead of letting your tower and everything get down, to where you've gotta have two guys stand up their base to sit all night, you would fire that generator up, and you would be back on mobile operation, you would never be long on water.
And we have plenty of time to fire the generator up.
Yes.
But I have sat with you and sweated bullets, watching the level drop, waiting for the power to go.
And you know what that's like, so you...
Yeah, it was a great fun, hoping that we made the right decision, this hour would come on before that plane dropped too low. But it was eleven o'clock at night, I believe.
But you, you become a snake to go to your wife, because if you order the generator, you're an idiot. If you don't order it, you're an idiot. So what are you doing?
Kick the can down the road?
I personally think if it wasn't worth it, there wouldn't be so many towns around us that have it. They are, who, everybody has it, pretty much.
Well, but, yeah.
What is this part of the overall system? I think the system was put in, and...
It was part of it.
Yeah, it was part of it, yeah. So I, I just, I just think it should be looked at here.
I agree with Bruce, you know, and this, this situation with old settlers, I mean, it brings things into focus, and it makes everybody think about it. But that's probably not the best time to make the decision. Like Debbie says, it could happen next week again, you know, like it could strike twice, but we do have to talk about it. It's something we have to consider. I don't have the answer. I guess, you know, I'm sixty-five, has my life insurance been a good idea? Didn't get anything for it.
Would this fall under a committee or more?
I think it would, yeah, we, we should probably take this to the water committee, I think, as well as possibly police. And that should cover a few bases. We're gonna need it with police chairman, hopefully soon. But it, I think that we all should be involved in this, and I think the community needs to be involved. People who grasp the situation, and feel they grasp the situation, should be involved. It doesn't, it's not hard work to jump on a computer and, and look at these kinds of scenarios. I think the fire department could probably access some data. And we need to have cold, hard data, not just emotional. We have to look at it hard, because it's, it's money, it's a lot of money.
Because if we go by direction here, you say we need to do it, but we probably could go out in the town and, and find the exact opposite. I, I... I would think so, but some of the ones at the time wouldn't, when it came to doing it...
They wouldn't wanna spend the money.
They wouldn't wanna spend the money.
I had a very prominent citizen, Rob, asked me why the heck the way they'd sew her should feel like. I mean, maybe it was just talking off the top of his head, but yes, you're gonna get that, I think, obviously. Well, in regard to the item, water equipment purchase, it was brought up this way simply to present to the council, to give you something to start working with. Didn't expect that we'd approve it, they'd make a decision tonight to buy a generator, and if you wanna do that, fine. But we gotta figure where the money's gonna come from, if you make that decision, so we have to go digging. But it needs to be on there, and it needs to be talked about, and I don't really want to present one side or the other. I don't wanna be emotional and say, well, gee, if it saves one life down the road in thirty-five years, it's worth a big penny. That's not a good argument, because there are too many things that fall into that category. And I don't wanna say it's a foolish idea, because it's not a foolish idea. Somewhere between those two points, we have to come down. Anything else on that? A little bit of, I guess you could call it housekeeping work. Bruce helped me out on this. We have a motor fuel tax resolution to...
Well, this was from last year, and MFT, there's a appropriation of forty-eight thousand dollars. Actually, I spent forty-eight thousand, nine, sixty-three, seventy, and the engineers have sent a supplemental appropriation of two thousand dollars over to cover what was actually spent. So we've given ourselves the authority to spend on, plus a little actual...
Yes, so what we need is a resolution on this motor fuel tax supplemental.
To supplement the MFT from last year, five, two thousand dollars. And if it, you have to, comes out of that fund, you've gotta appropriate it each year. Last year, they appropriated forty-eight thousand. Well, the appropriation sets the new accident amount that you can spend. They actually spent more, just spent more than forty-eight thousand. We do a supplemental appropriation, or a covering, what I'm asking. It's a, you do a supplemental appropriation, uh, or a covering, but I guess... If you don't do that, then I'm not sure about that. Pardon me? It's already been spent. But if it approved after forty-eight thousand, actually spent forty-eight thousand, nine, ten.
Where does the money for supplementing?
It's already been spent. MFT was spent last year.
You should say, where is it actually coming, what fund is it coming out of?
It's out of MFT.
It's out of MFT. We should have to prove the fact that...
Well, it's already been...
It's like if you have a thousand dollars in your savings account, and you said you're going to spend five hundred, but you spent six hundred. Ultimately, it's in the same account. We just spent what we said we were going to add that into your account.
You have to give yourself authority to spend this money. You, you understand the council wants to spend nine hundred and some dollars more than they gave themselves authority to spend. So this is not a matter of you spending more money. You already spent. It's a matter of you giving yourselves authority to go, done what you already did.
It's, it's a legality.
It's, it's...
It doesn't make any sense at all.
Yeah, but you got it. It's the payment.
It's, it's engineering. You have to redo it. It has to go through engineering and back on, because the state comes in and audits every year on the motor fuel tax. They account to the dollar where it goes. If you spent more than what you said you were going to spend, they want to know why, and it's just something you have to do.
It probably would be good if any of you were interested, on the, on the council, anyone else in that matter, to see a copy of that and get a copy. This is probably a very rare occurrence, but, you know, the, that, that came about because the council voted for a project to pay for it through MFT, which we had the budget prior to that point, and as a matter of course, it came out that we spent too much on it at MFT. So we weren't watching where the money was coming from. And I've said this many times, when you authorize expenditure, we have to make sure we have the money. We can't spend money we don't have.
I guess another way to answer your question is, if you don't do this, we have to take that much money and buy it back.
And pay it back in...
Pay it back in the, yeah.
I'm moving on to do that.
We've got a motion to rescind, approve the resolution of, of the motor fuel tax funds on supplemental. Uh, on my desk, it seems like I have two things. You do have two things, but... Before you get...
Yes, Bart, we're still on motor fuel tax.
Yes, Mike.
Good.
Right. I would like to see the, our bid letting is, Bart, did you get a letter on that that says when it's... Drake called me, Dan told me our bid lets within, I think, next week, within the next two weeks.
And you need authorization if somebody...
And I would like the council to authorize committee or committee chair or whoever to approve the lowest reasonable bid, so we don't have to wait till the next meeting and slow us down. That's why we had a special meeting. If we don't do this, we'll have to call another special meeting, which kind of gets redundant, and we can just do it with one person.
So we need a resolution, or a, uh, we need a...
Authorization.
We need a motion to approve, uh, a person, probably the chairman of the street and alley committee, to approve of the low bid.
Lowest responsible bid.
Lowest responsible bid.
That is no more than the engineers' estimate.
Within ten percent, I would say.
Ten percent of the engineers' estimate.
Right, because it goes, it fluctuates both ways, it depends on what...
No more than ten percent above the engineers'. I know that they've had some difficulty because of the price of the oil.
It's a ride.
Most of the...
Who would be there?
I would be... God, I can't imagine.
But, but that would be good because of the day we have the bid letting.
You know, we're trying to...
We could, you could come all the way to the city all along enough for them to do things like, you know. You'll have people there. That, that's what I'm requesting, so, so we just don't, you know, we, we held a special meeting, so we didn't hold up the seal code. Well, there's no sense in holding it up now or having to call a special meeting. We can just take care of this one.
So we need a motion to authorize someone, Tommy or anyone, or me or whoever, to accept the bid at least within ten percent. Lowest reasonable bid, reasonable then, responsible with...
Lowest responsible.
Responsible bid within ten percent. Debbie makes that motion, second thought. Who did we move to approve to have, was it...
You did.
We did. We didn't say who. Who do you want to do it, to accept the bid? Tommy, you got your street and alley committee chair. Now we can...
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry to make the hotels wait so long, but they're very patient. Uh, we are very pleased to be informed that the grocery store will be reopening very soon. Would you please stand up and introduce yourself?
My name is Charles Patelal on Wyoming Super value, and Tula and LLC come to me and see if I can take over the current grocery store in Tula market. Going to be renamed as the Super value Tula. I want to keep the Tula name in the grocery store. I hope we, you know, we will be working my tails off for last, you know, when they're on the roof and far there. I'm there seven to ten, just cleaning the place up, and hoping, you know, we're going to be a responsible community. And right now, I was scheduled to open until the fifteenth, but having the health department issue by early next week or Sunday sometime, but it's the next seven days should be open.
Thank you. Uh, Patel's asking for a packaged liquor license, which previously had been issued. For those of you who are a little unfamiliar, how Tula handles liquor licenses. For many years, we limited the number of liquor licenses in town by ordinance. And then by ordinance change, we increased the number of liquor licenses. At one time, there was only one liquor license in the city of Tula. I don't remember when we went two, but I do remember when we went to three, because I was mayor then. I also remember when we went to the packaged liquor licenses. The way Tula is set up is that we have the license basically available. It, it simply exists, and that license can be issued to an individual when that individual applies for it. The state of Illinois basically does all of our homework for us, because anyone who gets a liquor license has to go to the state. And the state makes them jump through a lot of hoops. City of Tula must authorize the liquor license prior to anyone going to the state to apply there. So in this case, this is one time the state actually does our work for us, because it's hard to say. The liquor license that Mr. Patel has requested actually exists. Basically, if it were a piece of paper, we'd be writing it on a drawer, and we would simply issue it to him and say, here's your liquor license, you may submit. The way this is done is the liquor commissioner, me, simply authorizes or gets that first, a liquor license. Now, historically, uh, in, I guess, because we do things, we like to work together, we always present these things to the council. It's called advice consent. Now, of course, we don't do these things without at least letting the council in on what's going on. In this particular case, uh, the authorization or the authority exists for me to give them the license. I will not do that if the city council has any qualms about it. Uh, so I guess what I, what I'm saying to you is, if you, do you have any objections? Is there anyone here who has an objection? If not, I would authorize that license. You do have the authority to, we could call a special meeting to have a vote, uh, to... The only vote that you would take would be to override my authorization of the liquor license, because I give it to him, and then three of you say, no. That's the only vote you could take in that case, so it's only a down vote, kind of veto. So I, I'm asking you this evening, for the sake of Mr. Patel getting his operation on the road, that he can get down to Straightfield, unless you have any objections to this, I would go ahead and issue him that liquor license, which probably exists, which, which Mr. Green previously helped at the grocery store. Any objection, any concern, any from the public, any concern? I've asked him if he gets the liquor license, he'll have good beer. Most of you should know that we ran an ad in the newspaper, I believe, in the QY paper, as well as in the Tula paper, for additional part-time policemen. I received two applications. One has been vetted by Frank, and I don't know if he's given it to anyone else. It seems that paperwork doesn't get where it needs to go all the time. But Frank was getting a copy of this application, I think, about a week or eight days ago, nine days ago. And he was asked to share it with everyone else. I don't know that he did. And has it also sent to Doug Richards, and he's looked at it. And again, this falls under the heading of, uh, basically, the authorities hire people. We can hire people as city workers, as part-time policemen. And again, that does require authorization, but it does require that I work with you. And that, of course, the way I like to do things is I like to send things to the committee and ask the committee to share it amongst themselves, and, if possible, to send it to everyone else. I'd like to be able to get some sort of a mailbox set up, where you guys can all get stuff. We're not getting, I don't like the idea that you have to wait for a council meeting to find out about so many things that should simply be distributed to you. If I'm not in town, I mean, I was, I was late last week when this came in, and I wanted everyone to get a copy, and I can't do it from down the lake. But by the same token, we are shorthanded, we're short-staffed, we need to get on the road. As I have said, that my goal was to have three people on the street that know the community. So that we do have a calamity, we do have an explosion, a ammonia leak, a climate as fire, but we've got people that we can staff the city with in case of emergency. We don't want to have people that don't know the street names and the people who live there. And that's always been my goal, is to have three people familiar with the city of Tula. So any questions on that? That's where this stands at the moment. We do have one affirmation of this, then, which looks pretty good. And if you'd like to look at it, I mean, it's certainly more than, it's like anything else, you don't, not much to put in the paper. Things are written on it. I've talked to this gentleman. Have checked his references, checked them. Hopefully, we'll get a committee, a police, an active police chairman before next month, and then some of the load comes off my shoulders again. It's nice to have active committees. There's another voice. Anything else, right before the council? Anything for the community, any, or anything, have I missed anything?
How do you want to answer?
Yes.
Uh, we had several trees come down in that storm, and do you have someone in charge managing some of our trees? I have one that came down on my daughter's car and took out her windshield, and there's one big, long, tall snag left, and it'll come down in the next storm. And I don't know who would land on that.
Well, Mike, would that be a streets and alleys?
Yeah, it would.
It would.
It all falls down to we can find out about those trees, I'll come back and report it to the council, and you guys make the decision on what you have to make and fix it.
And again, it gets to Mike. We have a fellow in town, a nice guy, and he likes to stop me on the street, tell me which trees about ready to fall. Because we hired him to drop those trees, and he does it for a real good rate. I think he does it because he loves to drop trees. The problem is, after the tree's down, we have to clean it up. We have a chipper, and the guys are pretty good at it, but, again, as Mike said, it takes time. So, you know, we, the way it has worked is that he tells me a tree looks like it's about to fall over. I take Mike, and Mike says, yeah, it looks like it's about to fall over, and then he goes on the list. As soon as we have the time, the tree gets dropped. Don't know that it's the best system.
Well, we lost ours, it was kind of my insurance, and there's commercials helping to cover those hazards.
The city will take down any tree that's a hazard that's on the right way.
So it was covered by insurance, but he did it very quickly, so it's not...
Well, our, our forbearers had the foresight to put lots of trees around town. Unfortunately, some of them, maples, they've been a long life. As they put up hackberries and chestnuts, they'd be doing great pokes, but some of these maples, seventy-five years, they're coming down. They look nice, they grew fast. Mike?
This tree stood up there on this corner for how many years before it finally died? And we finally took the top a lot of, it got down to the trunk. I, I mean, that's... Policy probably needs to be addressed.
Well, we've got the, we've got the, the, um, Emerald, um, Elm.
Elm.
Elm, so we're going to be losing trees to that in the next five years, eight years. It would be nice to have people who are concerned, I mean, that would be probably, ours would be great to have, the city arborist, that'd be super.
How's, how's that out, like, in your tree city, how do they do that?
You contact people like Trees Forever. And Trees Forever, last year, gave us three thousand dollars to plant trees, a lot of them went into the cemetery. But the problem with putting in trees is that if we put a tree over Jason's house, he's got to promise us to water it. Because we don't have, again, the people and the time to water all the trees that you might have planted. So we, we could probably put, we could probably get another grant from Trees Forever to put trees in, and they advise, gives us all this stuff for free, but then it becomes an organizational issue. Then it goes, if we put a tree in somebody's house, they have to promise to water it, and that went over with their lawn.
So we basically need to come forward and say, I don't like it.
We have tried that, and not too many people responded, so a lot of them ended up in the cemetery quite.
The other issue is, we have to be careful where we put the trees?
Oh, yes. And Trees Forever will provide us with native species that are low stage, and we can plant near wires. High stage, we can plant where there's not a problem, like down in the cemetery. And it's free. It's just a matter of talking to them. I have this name, I think, to speed down here.
Speaking of the cemetery, have you noticed that you're losing a lot of those trees?
We, we lost two, I know for sure.
Oh, it was more than that?
Of those that you've planted around town?
There's five or six.
Yeah, was there any, uh, replacement or anything on those, or? Was there any type of replacement?
If you don't water it, they don't give you free ones.
They've been watered.
I know, also said mine's been watered, but not yet.
We, the boys, you know, the jeter's gone out there and watered trees.
Two or three, you know, not every day, but...
Mike, the trees that were lost, right from the second batch or the first batch, are the same, same.
They'd be the batch, they did the two in front of them, it's not the second batch, I mean. That was the later batch. I mean, all of them taken.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, it's, they take like eight to ten gallons a day, and there's no way that we have the time for the people to do that much watering. We put sixty trees out there in the cemetery.
Are you going to reboot the dead ones, though?
Well, yeah, hopefully, because we have to.
I want to see what happens. I, I, I hold out hope that maybe something will come back, but it probably won't.
I was out there with the cemetery walking, I mean, they're, they're just, they're gone, until there's...
Bad luck, you know? Real bad drop year, once every, about twenty years or something.
They did really well from the time we were there, I mean, we put them that light, and I was really pleased, because we had that nice money. This brick building.
A lot of trees are up there. Anything else? If not, one other thing, a motion to the jury. Bravo.